We need approval now or we're good?
Uh, we vote on it.
Yeah, yeah, we vote, we just voted on it.
I'm looking.
The add, and my question is, do we need a vote on that since we added that?
Yeah, we do an amendment.
Alright, now since we've amended, uh, do we have approval of the agenda?
Motion.
We have a motion?
Say it.
Have a second, all the favoriters right hand. Alright, you understand. Approval minutes, uh, we don't want to time October tenth, twenty seventeen, right up to me.
Yes, uh, move the, uh, second as planned.
Don't crash, have a motion, have a second.
Yes, sir.
Have a second, Mr. Woods, all the favoriters right hand. She's in that, thank you. October tenth, twenty seventeen, strategic planning session.
I moved it, we said, uh, what session is it?
Mr. Midley?
Chris.
You have a second?
Yes, sir.
Just play through a second, all the favoriters right hand. Alright, you understand, thank you. We had notable business, uh, new business, ordinance number seven sixty-three, orders to amend an agreement for development of a joint county industrial business park of Dillon and Marlborough Counties, so as to enlarge the park first reading, Mr. Monahan.
This is different than the tri-county park with the Harbor Freight deal, this is another park, and if you'll remember, we typically do these agreements where we get like one percent of a deal in another county, and it's to allow them to get, to get better incentives to recruit, so we'll have more details on that for second reading, more details on what it is, but it's a, it's, you know, a typical thing we do here, have done many times.
I have a question, sir.
Go ahead.
Are there any pending plans for locating any industries that are just doing this getting there?
Uh, this is for a project that's coming, yeah, or supposedly coming.
Is the name, we don't know yet.
No ma'am, we just want to get it started, if y'all will allow.
More questions? Now, do you have a motion for first reading?
First, say it.
Have a motion, uh, have a second, Mr. Midley, all the favoriters right hand. You understand, thank you. Order seven sixty-four, orders to approve the lease agreement between Marlborough County and Humane Society Marlborough County Corporation, first reading, title oral, Mr. Monahan.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I mean, we've got a lot of guests here tonight, so I'll briefly explain that when we do an ordinance, we have to have three readings, at three separate meetings, seven days apart, so if we do something to, if council enters into a lease or, or some kind of contract, they have to do three readings, and in some cases have a public hearing. For this, for this one tonight, uh, we're, um, asking council, staff's asking council to approve, uh, an ordinance, or an ordinance to allow for a lease with the Humane Society Marlborough County, and we're asking in title only, and you can do that just to begin that three reading process. So what that usually means when you have a title only, is that there are a lot of details to be worked out, and so, um, staff has met with the Humane Society and, and has proposed to them from a staff level, that the Humane Society operate our animal shelter, and in exchange, the county would give some of the money we use now to operate the Humane Soci- or the animal shelter, to the Humane Society. So you can see how there are a lot of details, but we did receive an email from, uh, the leadership of Humane Society saying that they are interested, they want to proceed, provided that we have to work out all of the details. So that's my recommendation to council, that you approve the first reading, and that we work out the details, and hopefully come to an arrangement that'll work for all of us.
Any questions, hold that.
I make a motion, we have a second, uh, title one, that ordinance number seven sixty-four.
Woods, have a second. Glad, all the favoriters right hand. You understand, uh, next approval, twenty eighteen holiday schedule. Mr. Monahan.
Well, as, as I'm learning, being a government employee now, that if the wind blows the right direction, the government takes a day off, so, um, we have, we have to ask you to approve this annually, the only difference this year is that, uh, President's Day has been added, so if you, if you stay here long enough, we'll have about thirty days off, but, uh, this is typical of what other government agencies are doing, and when the banks close and that kind of thing, so we feel like it's a reasonable request.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve that? I said, no, no motion, we have a second, I mean, all the favoriters right hand. Thank you. Any pending support or information? Miracle, alright, so next, I miss Amy Moore, one of the first.
Mr. Chair, members of council, for the month of October, expenditures were at thirty-one percent of the budgeted amount, revenues for this month were at fourteen percent, revenues are under budget by about nineteen percent for the fiscal year, but this is almost the same percentage, um, that they were at for this point in the last fiscal year. Tax notices have been mailed out, and I know there will be a significant increase in collections over the next few months, which will level out expenses versus revenues. I was pleased to see that our local government allocation that we received this month had increased by about eighty-four hundred dollars, which is always a positive. If this trend continues each quarter, this would mean approximately thirty thousand more in revenue, which you know is always a plus with a budget as limited as ours. Our annual financial audit is still progressing well, the auditors are still gathering a few remaining pieces of information, and are still on track with a timely audit confirmation. Is there any questions?
Any questions, sir. Next, Mr. Monahan, Mr. Chair.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, um, as we do every month, we have a number of employee service anniversaries. This month are Lori Davis Moses thirteen years, Ricky Gooden six years, Phyllis Hagan twenty-six years, Gary Harrington twelve years, Jessica Jones fourteen years, and Christina Thompson eleven years. We also have a, a lot of upcoming events to make you aware of, um, we have a ribbon cutting for the new Clayo Rural Fire Department, which has been scheduled for Tuesday, December fifth at four P M. We recently had one for the Brownsville Station, and this will be the same thing. The McCall Christmas Parade is on Wednesday, December sixth, at four, and we, uh, we, we can have a float, we can have a float if we'd like, something we can discuss, or y'all can give me input, Mr. Odom can give some input later. The Clayo Christmas Parade is on Saturday, December ninth, at ten in the morning, and we do have a float reserved for that, Mr. Woods, and, um, the details on when to come and when to show up are on the report here. Clayo will also light, have a lighting of a Christmas tree in the town square right after the parade. The Bennettsville Christmas Parade is Tuesday, December twelfth, at four thirty, we have a float reserved, and so everyone that wants to participate can show up, uh, no later than three thirty on Broad Street. The Sixth Annual County Employee Christmas Dinner has been scheduled for Thursday, December seventh, at the Wade H Prince Recreation Center in Bunham, the old Bunham Gym, this has been a very successful event, we're looking forward to that. The Economic Development Partnership will have their annual drop-in on Monday, December eleventh, uh, here from four to six, you're welcome to, are invited to come to that, and the Marlborough County, uh, employee, I guess it's employee annual drop-in, Ms. Bundy, will be held Wednesday, December thirteenth, from eleven thirty to one thirty, and that's, we have that in the administration building, kind of come as you are, kind of thing. Uh, moving on, uh, economic development report, since our last meeting, we've had a return visit to the Ballador Building in Clayo, and I know I've been saying this for months, but it continues to be a very hot property, the return visit was to bring in the people with the big checkbook, so, uh, we're hoping that works out, uh, we have a number of interested parties there, and this one's been the one that's moved them furthest along. I attended a NISA quarterly meeting, uh, it was like a lot of meetings where you listen to people talk, but it did have a consultant that I had said a few things I find interesting, mostly interesting because he's saying the same thing we've been saying, so anytime you can find somebody from out of town with a briefcase that agrees with you, then you, uh, you must be doing something right. But they, they talked about how we should promote what we are and, and not try to promote what we're not, try to be something we're not, that it's unreasonable for us to try to recruit a very large industry because we don't have enough people here to support it. He said that for every job, you need thirty applicants, so you can see how you could need, you know, tons of people to apply, and when you're looking at highly skilled things, you know, we're, we're working on, uh, the vocational education and those things to help our workforce, right now, we would be better to focus on smaller industries with thirty, fifty, seventy-five people, and have a number of those instead of one, that if it went away, you would have a greater impact. And he talked about how you, we need a speculative building, and we need a spec building, because that's the first thing people look for, and that's how you get them to come look. Right now, the Ballador Building's our spec building, we don't own it, but that's how it's working. Uh, moving on to the administrative report, um, as I mentioned, we had the ribbon cutting at the Brownsville Fire Station, I think it went real well, um, Mr. Blackman spoke, and Mr. Chairman Steen spoke, and, um, we want to celebrate positive things like that that council's done, it helps people's insurance ratings go down, it helps their insurance bills go down, so that's important. We are in the last stages of implementing a work order system for the county maintenance department, and all departments will be required to use this, um, by the end, uh, here by the end of December, and that means if you need something repaired, you have to go online and put a, a thing, a, a work order in, that way we can track, uh, you know, what we're doing, and how much we're spending labor and materials, and with budget time, we can have a better feel for what to do. We'll also soon include vehicle maintenance, fleet maintenance, so we'll start to, you know, address concerns council, that's glad it's had, you know, about maintaining our vehicles properly. I think we have been trying to do that, but now we'll have records to say, to see, uh, exactly what's been spent on what. After that, we'll work on a three-one-one system, if this goes like we want it to, you could eventually have a note where you can dial three-one-one on your cellphone, and it'll go to someone and you tell them, uh, there's trash on my road, or my trash didn't get picked up, or there's a stray animal that needs to be picked up, it'll, it'll create that system that then goes to the right people, and what I like to see, if it works for us, is that we approach the city of Bennettsville, or maybe the other towns, and see if they want in on it, share some of the expense, and make it to where our citizens can call one number and get what they need, so we're looking forward to that. I'll, I'll be scheduling a meeting with the city of Bennettsville about tax liens for demo- demolishing derelict properties, we received a letter from the administrator, the city administrator about, um, entering into an agreement with the city where if they tear down a house, the, the cost to tear down a house can be put on the tax bill of that property. Obviously, we've talked a lot about doing this kind of thing, and strategic planning, but I have concerns that you're gonna take, uh, a piece of property that's worth two hundred dollars, and put a two thousand dollar bill on it for tearing the house down, and then nobody's gonna bid on it, and then once nobody bids on it, it goes into the Forfeited Land Commission, we've talked about that before, that's where things go, they go to tax sale and nobody bids on, once it goes into that, and nobody's paying taxes on it, and it just sits there. So we want to meet with them, uh, Chairman Steen, Mr. Eastland, and probably their counterparts, and just, let's figure out, you know, what to do, Ms. Barrington will be involved, uh, to accomplish what we want to accomplish without creating a problem. Blue Law's, we've had some inquiries, uh, I know Mr. Mr. Midley was one that inquired about what do we do to take the next step to allow Sunday alcohol sales, and, um, we had taken steps a while back to allow the sale of non-alcohol, but other things on Sunday, we did that by an ordinance, well, to do this requires an ordinance, but also a referendum, the voters have to vote on it, and we had some input that Marion County had maybe done it differently, but I spoke to them today, and Mr. Eastland did his second look at it, and they had a referendum, you have to have a referendum, and it has to occur in a general election year, and next year would be, for whatever reason, considered that, so if council wants to go that route, we would start in the summertime, present it to you, pass an ordinance, put it on the ballot, if people vote for it, then you could allow it, so you, you gotta at least wait till then, but, um, I think from just talking to you all, you want to at least take it and bring it to the people and let them decide, so we'll start working on that. And I thank Mr. Eastland for, uh, looking into that again, and just making sure something had changed in the year or so since we looked at it last. The last thing is a solid waste fee that we've, uh, recently implemented, we've had, you know, some folks calling concerned about that, and, uh, um, in the next couple of weeks, we'll start to implement some of the things that are gonna be paid for by that, we've talked about that, uh, in meetings, we actually, council voted on this fee three separate times, in three separate meetings, in three separate months, and had a public hearing, so, uh, it shows why it's important if you're a citizen and you have a concern, that you come pay attention and, and speak up, um, because we've had a lot of folks sort of surprised by it, but what we, uh, what our intent is to, um, start putting these programs out that we're doing, and starting to show what's gonna happen, and then folks will see that they're getting something for their money. You know, it's, it's unfortunate that, uh, that we've, we've gotten this way, you know, about trash on, in the sides of the roads and all, and as I take people out looking to come here, uh, they're, they're saying to me, you know, what in the world's going on here, and they wonder why we would allow it to be this way, so I applaud council for taking action, even though it's painful at times, and I'll give you my commitment that I'm gonna try to make sure, uh, that, that you all don't get run out of office when it comes back around next time, because, uh, people won't see something for their money, and I understand that. And, and just one other thing, we met today, Chairman and I, with, uh, Davis Enterprises, the Solid Waste Hauler, the people that pick up our trash, um, they have concerns, and we have concerns about the service they provide, and the quality of service they provide, I think we had a very good meeting, and came up with some pretty innovative ideas that, uh, make it, change this thing for the better, so we're gonna keep working on that until it stops working, I want you to know that we've done that. I can answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Um, we had no citizens, no requests, there were, I guess, council members, Scott, when I, sure.
Uh, I just, I haven't thought of it. I just like to think everybody's coming out to the Brownsville, uh, ribbon cutting at the fire station, you know, really good, um, you know, just a good thing, I think it's gonna be good throughout the county, but I'll, we're still, we're putting up, and it's good to show you working together, it'll take you a long way, so I'm happy to be here.
Uh, I'd like to remind everyone that our annual, uh, Thanksgiving turkey giveaway will be this coming Saturday, the eighteenth of this coming November, at the Marlborough High School Park, as usual, and in time, nine o'clock, ten, I'm not sure.
Nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock, as always, there'll be special provisions for elderly, disabled individuals to be, um, served first, so.
And they have that pretty. But we should let them.
Uh, I was gonna say, I just told, uh, Mr. Steen, just tell him to be real nice, and everything he let it say about, uh, things that's going wrong here in the county, right? So while I was saying, that, uh, Family Farm Road is where the new fire department's going up, the seniors court, and the building's starting to go up, and that's great, because that's the new state, everybody in that area, the fire insurance will drop, and that's, that's a great deal. The Walker Trail, up at, right for having to the park, I was up there today, they got the ground laid out, then we pour everything, and the guy guaranteed me by the second we get your signal, if whoever wants to walk on the Walker Trail, right for having to the park, it'd be better for everybody, right? And I want everybody to enjoy a holiday, just have a good time, a whole lot of things I'd like to say about Wednesday, January, everybody enjoy the holidays. Thanks, sir.
Alright, you have a paper for it? Mr. Steen.
Uh, I have a plan to see tonight, uh, representative of the Humane Society come out, and I appreciate y'all being here before, looking, uh, in troop six twenty-five, I appreciate y'all coming here, and hopefully y'all getting proper credit at, uh, this baby, and so, fucking, we'll just, we'll just sign up.
You do?
Well, that's quick. Uh, Clayo, um, we're looking forward to the, um, ribbon cutting, um, I feel personally that, uh, Clayo has the best fire department in the county.
Oh, 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 oh.
And it was a lot of things, and, uh, and it was open, uh, but, uh, if we do that, and, uh, we do hope everybody come out, um, also on Saturday, um, yes, I think our tenth annual, um, Thanksgiving dinner, um, we got the meeting, uh, everybody, Mr. Um, McCray, um, and we feed, um, everybody, everybody who come in from ten to two at Clayo Depot, uh, this Saturday, uh, Thanksgiving, um, dinner, and we, we give a lot of support, um, a lot, she do put a lot of work in, and we'd love for everybody to come out, either to eat or to help, um, our hands on deck, we, we really appreciate it. And also, we got another restaurant in Clayo, yeah, we have, um, Backyard Cafe, it is, um, owned and operated by local people, you know, they, um, we, I would say before that, um, a lot of people leave Clayo, uh, or leave home, and don't come back, and don't invest back, but, uh, the Benjamin family, he had two businesses in Clayo, and, and he opened up a back, he called Backyard Cafe, and this, um, of course, you know, had come check it out, he was, he was, you know, so we got C I T crib, and Backyard Cafe, and, um, director for food, business, business, and always good food out there, you know, we, we know food, good food in Clayo, so, we get tired of, uh, cookout, come see us, you know.
Alright.
I'm good, very good.
Alright. Well, it, it is good, whenever you see, uh, us in the hardware council, what, what all the fire stations would be going, you know, uh, we run around, around the station, I mean, lots, uh, you know, Clayo, I mean, and it started when, you know, a group of, uh, council appointments, got a fire board together, and, you know, with a fire board, with a fire chief, they started meeting, they started putting things together in place, and so, yeah, I mean, it's the thing, you don't get to hear a whole lot about the good things, but there's a lot of good things happening, you know, but you look this past week on, uh, right across the mall, or you seen that big sign come down Industrial Park, one of the northeastern technical college, uh, Marlborough County campus, uh, you know, I don't know about y'all, but it makes you feel good whenever you see some Marlborough County campus up there, so, but, uh, you know, great things, uh, will be coming from that, and so, uh, uh, you know, we got, we got, it takes, it takes a long time to get things moving, but, you know, but, once you finally get it, hopefully, there's a lot of progress, uh, continuing to move forward, um, so, and it's good, you know, we did have some, like I said, some input on the, uh, forty dollar waste fee, and so, uh, but we are, we do have a plan, is to actually clean up our county, as Mr. Monahan said, and, you know, and, uh, the thing is, is, uh, everybody sees the condition of our rooms, couches on them, recliners in them, and nobody wants to sit on them in the ditch, but, uh, so our point is to get them cleaned up, and, you know, but, you know, in the summertime, there'll be summertimes where you know it, there's tractors that come by cutting the, you know, our main corner from, you know, the State Line North Beach, and there's trash, you know, and we want people to know, we, we may be a poor county, but we can be a pretty poor county, we don't have to be trash everywhere, so we do have some plans to move forward, and, uh, and everything, uh, it didn't get this way overnight, and it won't get fixed overnight, so, but we do have a, a good group of people up here that's working together for the development of our county, so we can say that, so, with that, we'll continue, we'll start our strategic planning, we have been here, uh, long, you know, we can.
I thought I talked too long.
Yeah, no, we've been here too long.
I did. Okay.
Three minutes. Three minutes.
You're gonna film back in my head there, you. Um, for those folks that haven't been here for our previous sessions, this is the third session of strategic planning that county council has done, we've done this, uh, over the years, probably every three years or four years, where we try to come up with a, council comes up with a plan to, um, to kind of have a, a, a roadmap for the staff to try to go forward, and things they want to work on, and, and areas of concern, so we're not just up here, uh, making it up as we go, most, for the most part, but, uh, this is the last one, and for this time, and what I've done, uh, for council, since I know we have a lot of people in the audience, is try to make it where you can look on that printed sheet, and then I'll, I'll do it off of here. If my computer crank up. There we go. Okay. We usually take a break between these, but since the meeting was so short, council wanted to move on, I think that's a good idea. Keep it working. I think I gotta maybe turn it on this one. Okay. Okay. What we've done for, what council, obviously to refresh council, um, the first meeting, we, uh, we looked at where we are and, and as a community, and talked a lot about the things that we had going against us, and we, um, then came up with a list of, of items that make up quality of life in a community, so things like, uh, education, or public safety, or personal financial condition, those things, that experts use when they look at a town or a county and see, you know, whether or not it's a good place to live, and then council went through those, and we identified things within that that made up those things, so, you know, we, you'll see these as we go along, and then at the last meeting, we went through them and determined which ones county council sort of had to do because of the law, or wanted to do, and so for this meeting, what we've done is, um, is take these, and from what you all did last time, I've taken them and applied what I think we've talked about already, as far as things we can do to address the issues, or things we should try to do moving forward, and talk about where the money would come from, and who else might partner with us. So the first one is health, I hope y'all can see that, I know it's kind of hard. Obviously, we know we have a problem with no hospital here, and because we have no hospital, we have a problem with EMS response times, because when they take somebody to hospital, it's out of town now, so we're losing them for however long it takes them to come and go, so here's some issues that, uh, initiatives that council, that I'm suggesting and council came up with last time, um, the first one initiative is to try to improve the response times of EMS, now, when we try to figure out how much that costs, that's gonna take some time, but we're gonna work on it. We do have a dedicated tax mill that's just for EMS, remember, so we've got some money. Folks that could participate in this would be Marlborough Rescue Squad, those, that's who we contract with right now, we have a contract with them, they're not a part of county government, they work for us, and we pay them each year, but they've been around forever, and we work very well together. The other is the, the Charities Trust Board, that has monies from the original sale of the hospital in nineteen eighty-four, they have a good bit of money, and we came up with some plan that would be a source of money for us. The second one, and I guess I should number these, is to, uh, one, one solution that's come out of this, is right now EMS can't take somebody they pick up to an urgent care, they have to take them to a hospital, and some communities have what's called freestanding emergency rooms, if you go to Charlotte through Wade's Borough, and you pass Wade's Borough on the left, there's a freestanding emergency room, like a mini hospital, well, um, the way the law is written now, the only people that could do that in Marlborough County are people that already have a hospital in South Carolina, well, obviously, in Marlborough County, Scotland Hospital is very active, and they're, they're not allowed to do that because they're across the lines, so one initiative would be to lobby the legislature to change that law, to allow them to build something here, I don't know that they would, but they certainly wouldn't even consider it if they can, and this was brought up on a task force, I think Mr. Steen was on that task force too, um, about trying to do this, considering our economic condition here, and the fact we're on North Carolina, North Carolina border, I think is something worth pushing, so obviously, our partners there are, the folks we would go to would be the legislative delegation there. The next one is to try to create, um, to try to make it to where a hospital already allowed to do it, like McLeod or Carolina's, to come here and do it, and to work with them on why it would be a good thing for them, maybe even figure out a way that we could help them somehow with what we have, again, these are very open-ended initiatives, but they're areas we could try. The last one is to lobby DHEC to allow the Rescue Squad to take somebody to an urgent care, there's been a pilot program in Lexington County where they let them do that, I met with McLeod, uh, last week, they wanted to see some nine-one-one call data, just trying to get a feel for things, and, um, in year-to-date, we've had like six hundred and fifty general sickness calls, if you, you know, one thing about Marlborough County is, everybody's got a police scanner, and everybody listens to what's going on, you know, and those are calls where people most likely would have gone to Marlborough Park, because they don't have a doctor, or they don't have insurance, well, it used to be the Rescue Squad would go and pick you up from Main Street or whatever, drop you off, and they're right back in action, now they're going all the way to Larnburg, all the way to Chesterfield, if Scotland wanted to make it to where they could receive those calls, or McLeod built a urgent care, they bought land, that's no secret, then, um, if DHEC would have changed the rules to make it where they could receive those, then maybe those calls like that could go there and free our EMS up for automobile accidents, or heart attacks, and more serious things, so again, this would be something we could approach DHEC on, but it'd also be something to talk to our legislators about. Any questions about it, because that's all I have for health, is there any, you know, I tried to pick the ones we went through last time, that we could actually maybe do something about, the audience should know, there's lots of issues that we included, that are more community issues, and that would be the next step in this process. Okay, I'll keep going till you make me stop. Next is the environment, and this includes, uh, trash and litter and those kind of things, so we obviously have a litter problem, and we need to undertake a county-wide cleanup effort, we have, uh, county council has implemented a solid waste fee that'll generate about three hundred thousand dollars, that money will be used for this purpose, um, we'll be coming out with specific. Um, we'll be coming out with specific things in the next weeks and a couple of months. We will try to partner with the cities, we've had at least one meeting to have a cleanup committee of the Economic Development Partnership, where we had the city and Bennettsville, Clough, Blenheim, all those people. Also, Palmetto Pride is an organization that's about litter, and we applied for a grant, I know the city has as well. We've also gotten to work with our uh judges, because sometimes they need to understand these are serious charges and we need to be able to prosecute people with penalties, you know, and sometimes that's not the case. Next issue is our uh derelict homes, mobile homes and structures, so these are situations like, we talked about Marshall Street and the bypass, where you've got trailers that are falling apart, or things that look really bad. So we want to work to try to identify those, prioritize where they are, we, we, we only have so much money, so we want to go after the ones that are most visible. And then uh, use money to have those torn down or removed. A couple of projects we have going on right now are the Marshall Street area, and also uh Mr. Odom, working with Mr. Odom and other people to clean up the casinos on the other side of McCall coming in from Larnburg. And we're making progress there, I can't share much more than that, but uh, you'll start to see stuff happen there. And this was done by y- you all in the budget, so you know, this isn't something new, you know, the public needs to know that. Next are abandoned industrial buildings and sites, we have two particular ba- particularly bad ones, one's Delta and Wallace. Um, unfortunately, would cost millions of dollars to try to do something about, but we should at least try. The other one is the Firestone Building, which is actually in the city of Bennettsville, it kind of weaves around and catches it, that looks really bad, and you know, you, you have things, snakes and rats and stuff that you don't want in there, so we're gonna work on that. We have uh, moving along, we have issues with our solid waste collection system, that's the people picking up the trash. We have to improve that service, and with improvement of service, we'll be, you know, citizens more, you know, satisfied and and wanting to participate, so we've uh, I've been trying to work with them, and then we've worked today with the chairman, we met with them today, and we have some ideas that we're gonna keep uh, keep working on to make that work better. Because there are a group, there are a fair number of people who like that service and want to keep that service. Uh, one other thing with the litter problem, we have uh, what I'm calling a yellow dumpster program, the county's purchased a yellow dumpster, it's about the color Mr. Eastland's tie, and it's got a big keep Marlboro County Clean and Green on the side of it, and uh, if your church group wants to clean up a neighborhood in the unincorporated area of Marlboro County, we'll bring that to you, we'll drop it off, you go at it, we'll come back and get it Monday and haul it off for free. So we're gonna create a way that we can help citizens help us and not do things. Now, right now, we're limited on the areas that aren't in a town or a city, but if it goes well, we'll go to the cities and towns, and we'll say, you know, a dumpster costs six thousand dollars and a sign costs a hundred dollars and, you know, to dump it costs three hundred dollars, and we'll work it out. We look forward to having that and getting, hopefully, the newspaper to take a picture of it, um, because it's something to see, it's uh, it looks like a school bus. Uh, the next, one of the most important slides, or one of the most important elements of this that council's developed, it's around the issue of personal financial well-being, and that means the economy, you know, how much money you have in your pocket, whether you have a job. We know we've had a decline in industry, um, and one of the things we're gonna do, the first thing, is develop more sites and improve the sites we have. When we have folks coming to look, they often look by what they find on the internet, they don't come here and look anymore, it doesn't work like that. And if we don't have an empty building that suits them, they just won't come. Often times that we have that building, they'll come and we show them something else and they switch off to it, but we're gonna have to develop a a building or some buildings, and we're also gonna have to take the sites we have, like the one on thirty-eight, and make sure the entrances are appropriate and that we, we have things that are appealing to businesses. Now, to actually create more industrial sites could cost two, three million dollars, uh, so it's a, it's not a do it six months kind of thing. But we do have economic development, development funds that we can get that come in for that purpose. We also can um, partner with South Carolina Commerce and and the utilities and and other folks, the city potent- potentially to do that. Uh, the second item is a, an interesting one, uh, and that's to participate in multi-county industrial parks. And I'm sure everyone's read that the Harbor Freight site is going to expand, almost double in size. And the more and more it looks like, the way we get large things like that is you have to be on the interstate, and you have to be regional. You, every Marlboro, Marion, Dillon, everybody's not gonna get these huge things, so you go after the big things in those central areas, and then you try to get the smaller ones in our area that feed them. Now, um, one thing we're gonna have to do that comes up in another, another uh slide is, try to figure out a way to get people from Marlboro County to these jobs, because we're hearing from the industries that they have good people that want to work, but four people riding a car, and when the car breaks down, four people don't come to work that day, so there's things we're gonna have to do. But we're in the one, the, the, the um, Harbor Freight, we're in with Dillon and Marion, and we share in some of the tax revenue. Dillon, Marion is interested in doing it again, and so I've told them, let's, let's talk, and then we'll go to our councils and talk some more, so we'll move along with those things. Uh, moving along, uh, the county owns a railroad in the county, if folks didn't know that, and we contract the operation with a company that's run it for twenty, almost thirty years, and we've received some money from how much business they do. It is potentially a really strong thing to attract industry here with, but we need to make sure that it's keeping up to date, that it has the right cars and the right service for new industries here, and we, we should work with them to do that, so that's one thing we would do. Um, the last two things address the loss of population and the overall economy, and we talked about this a long time ago when I first came here, and it's, it's two parts of it. One is to target recruitment of new residents, we're starting to see people that move in and and start to CLT in a restaurant, that came here from somewhere else, up north. Or people come here that, we wonder, well, where'd you come from, they're, they're coming from high-cost areas, they want to retire close to the beach, and I think these are folks that we could really go after. They don't, they don't need a lot of things we struggle with, you know, they don't, they don't necessarily need schools or things like that, they just want to retire here, and so we should go after that. The other is uh tourism, we um, we do have some historical type things and reasons people would want to come through here, and we need to promote that better. And of course, we can partner with the partnership and the Chamber of Commerce and the city and all kinds of folks to do that. Uh, the next one is public safety, we had a concern about the limited number of patrol deputies in the county, yes sir?
Well, I, I mean, whatever you said, the population, I think it'd be good to enlighten everybody here where our population is compared to how long we've ever been.
Um, you want me to try to show that slide?
Do you have that slide?
Yeah. Let me figure out how to do this real quick. Yeah, anybody who came to the meeting tonight mistakenly become trapped in a meeting here, so you just have to bear with us, but it is, it is good. We started trying to figure out how we got where we are, you know, how we got in the situation we're in, one of the first things that I saw during research was the population. And if you look here, you'll see that um, and I'll make it do it like it's supposed to, hold on. I do what? Okay, here we go. Okay, so we started looking at population, and um, we noticed in nineteen ninety, we had twenty-nine thou- almost thirty thousand people here in Marlboro County. And I don't know about you, but most people here that are over the age of thirty-five or forty years old, we're kind of stuck in thinking about things in the nineties, because it's just kind of the way we think. So a lot of times when we look at what's around us, we're comparing why it's not as good as it was. But you can see now in twenty sixteen, that the census people say we have twenty-six hun- twenty-six thousand nine hundred and forty-five people, so we've lost a lot of population. What you don't know is, I don't think, is that in nineteen ninety, we added Evans Correctional, and that added thirteen hundred and eight people. And then around two thousand whatever, we added sixteen hundred and eighty-eight at the federal prison. Those people are counted in our population numbers. Not only are they counted in our population numbers, when we draw election districts for the county or the school district, we have to include those people in that district. They happen to be in, in Mr. Glad's district or Janice Bright's district on the school board. So what's really going on here is that we have twenty-three thousand nine hundred and forty-nine people here. Which means we've lost twenty percent of our population in that number of time. So why don't we have a hospital, maybe it's because there's nobody here? Why do we, can't we support a restaurant? The people that left this county were not people in poverty usually, they're people that had money, could go. And they've gone, and now we're in a situation where we have a greater percentage of people in poverty, maybe not more people, but a greater percentage. So, we have fifty-seven hundred less people that'll go to a restaurant, that can have insurance to go pay at the hospital, that can do all these things. And why did it happen? You know, we had NAFTA that allowed industries to move overseas, and, and we lost a lot of big industries, Delta and things like that, we lost those. We failed to ship what's required for jobs, we, we've, we're now doing a vocational education program, but we moved away from that. We went through a period where everybody was supposed to get a four-year English degree, you know, or like me, a four-year history degree, I mean, you know, how do you make a living with a history degree? You go get a master's degree. So we didn't keep up with that. We've uh, we don't have some of the infrastructure we need, and, and um, we've, we've gotten where we're regional, so the industries are going to Florence and not coming here, that sort of thing, and people move with it. And then the last thing was uh, you know, politically, Columbia and 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 Washington, they're gonna look at where all the people are, so we don't get, a lot of times, the schools don't get the funding they need for a rural school system. Or we don't get money we need, because it goes to Greenville or Charleston or whatever. So, I won't go into the whole presentation, because I was about to, but, but you can see that, that um, and, and council, I think, is of the opinion, we need to take this on the road and educate people. We beat ourselves up because we're all thinking, well, my gosh, we used to have this and we used to have that, we had six thousand more people here. Six thousand people that were, you know, were, you know, middle income, now we don't have that. So when we started this process, the reason I think you want to bring this up is, we did that to start out with, where are we now? And we can argue about how we got there, but we can argue all night, but we're there, and we need to look at things we can do to improve and quit thinking that, you know, uh, well, the reason that happens here is because people are negative, or people go out of town. No, not necessarily. So that's what all this has come out of, you know, if you ask me to talk, I'm gonna talk, so. But I'm, I'm very passionate about it, because it was kind of a lightbulb moment for us, the lightbulb went off of uh, what in the world happened, you know? So I'll try to finish this, I'm sorry I got off on that. You gotta tell me if it gets off again now. Okay, so I think we went through those, then we talked about public safety. Council came up with three issues that, that were councils to deal with. First is we had a limited number of deputies in the county, and I did add the word patrol deputies, because we've talked about that. You know, while we need, you know, detectives and things like that, we need people in uniforms riding on the roads, you got two people covering the whole county a lot of times. Now, um, we'll have to do that through general fund tax dollars, and we'll work and try to do that this coming year. We talked about fire service, a lot of our fire departments, all of our fire departments are volunteer. Those volunteers are aging out, they're getting to be older, I mean, Mr. Steen's on the younger end of it in a lot of ways, and I don't say how old you are, you're a little younger than I am. And then young people now, they don't want to do that like they used to, you know, and I think we were all coming up, a lot of people did, it was almost like being in a social club, and you just don't have that, so. What council's done already and got to do more of is figure out how to make it worth the while, it created a pay for response, so if they respond to a call at one time a year, we pay them ten dollars? Ten dollars, is that right? Ten dollars a call for every call during the year you went to. We need to make sure that we keep that up to date. We've also, council approved hiring some part-time people that, we spread, spread it out, but we have people that are paid on during the days. So they may be at Wallace this week, working on some maintenance, and if they get a call, they can at least, somebody can go out, and then next week, they may be at Clough Rural or or McCall or whatever. So that's been done, and and my suggestion is we keep doing that. Uh, the other thing is, we have a contract with the city of Bennettsville, people may not know this, to provide fire service for five miles outside the city limits. So if you live um, on Academy Road is probably a good example, you're in the Bennettsville Fire District. It's worked well, and uh, but I know that it's probably time that let's look at it and make sure it's working the best for both sides of it. And that couple will come up in the spring, that's part of the overall agreement we have with the city, so. Any questions on that one? Next one's education, and there were a bunch of educations, but they weren't ours to do, so we picked the ones that are ours to do. I hope that's not a North Korea guy coming to get us, or us going to get him. If it's one of them, I hope it's us going to get him. We talked about vocational training, and we want to continue to support the tech project at Wind Dixie, you know, county council often doesn't get credit for what they do, county council was right in the middle of that and provided that building, and um, have supported that, and we've, we've traded, you know, we, we've signed it over to them, and they're gonna run with it, and we will keep supporting it as we can. Still coming over. So we have uh recreation and amenities, and amenities include like restaurants and things to do in town. There's a lot of focus on recreation. We have a focus on stick and ball sports, field sports, soccer, baseball, football, and that's great. But if you've just seen the rest of the other presentation, we talked about how we'd lost thirty-seven percent of our kids under eighteen in that same period. So, and we also talked about how we, we need to use facts and not emotion when we make plans and we spend taxpayer money. So facts would tell you, do you need to add more ball fields? No, you probably need to fix the ones you have, and that's what this is, to where they're in great condition. But then we move on to the next thing, we need to start coming up with activities and sports for individuals and girls, a lot of things are male-dominated. And also programs for adults and seniors, because there, there's not a lot. We had some things with the senior center that I think closed, and the city does some things, but um, we want to develop things that everyone can uh, can participate in. There's a price tag included in it, but I think we have some things going that, that can, can help that out. Uh, then we talked about blue laws, uh, you know, we, you know, it's, it's your own personal moral decision whether you want to drink or not, but we, councils, uh, the impression I get from council is that you want to make that a personal decision and not a government decision, and with that, you may bring restaurants and all that would come because they can make money off of that. So that's one thing we'll pursue, already working on it. We also have a lot of cultural and historical attractions that aren't being utilized, we're in the process of hiring a museum director, and that person will be uh, responsible for promoting those things. And also, we need to uh, finish some of the work we're doing on like the Merkison Building and things to make sure we don't let these things fall down, um, and hopefully attract tourists, there, there are a lot of tourists that come through for that. So that's the last thing on that one. Transportation and infrastructure, uh, we talked a lot about that, the conditions of the paved roads, you know, there's a big push on the state level to do that, and they put in the gas ta- made the gas tax go up. Just like the solid waste fee, you know, they catch a little bit of, of uh complaints, but that's what they had to do, you gotta pay to play. And so we want to make sure that we at least have a voice in the fact that we need to keep working that way. We'll have to work with the transportation committee, the paving committee, um, to do that. The next issue was the conditions of the unpaved roads, which by and far are county roads, dirt roads. And the county gets a, a fee on everybody's taxes or everybody's vehicle taxes of thirty dollars, been doing it for years. People, it's been there so long, people stopped complaining about it. But what we want to do in this next year, and this is a goal of the organization, is to look at the roads that we're maintaining and make sure there aren't roads that we don't need to maintain, that are serving one person or a farm that maybe the farmer doesn't even want to have open anymore, and go through the process of figuring that out, and then the legal process of abandoning or turning those roads over to private people. The other thing we want to do is look at roads that have a lot of people living on it, and make sure that we at least get rock put on it, so that they have gravel on it and not just dirt, and then hopefully get them paved eventually. So that's a big uh, push of uh county public works. We talked about lack of public transportation to and from these plants, we want to work on that, uh, Marion County's done a project to, to ru- run people to Harbor Freight, we need to try to do one to run people to Mohawk and Harbor Freight and everywhere else, so we'll be working on that. The next one's a really big one, we have no interstate, and that really hurts us in trying to recruit industry here. They want to be on the interstate, or they want to be like four or five miles from the interstate. Well, we can't move the interstate, but what we can do is stop waiting on I seventy-three and make a concerted effort to go, build part of I seventy-three and connect Bennettsville with seventy-four and Hamlet with a four-lane road. And I was, you hear me all the time, I was economic developer in Rocketham, and we called that interstate even though it really wasn't, and it, you see what's happening right there at that intersection. This is gonna, we'll be out on our own on this a little bit, but I think once we get it together and start pushing it, Nisa and all those folks will fall in. If we, if we were able to get it built right by the state or whoever, um, it could then be adopted into I seventy-three. If we, if we were able to get it built right by the state or whoever, um, it could then be adopted into I-73. So I think we need to take a lead on doing that and, um, not wait around. We've been waiting for I-73 for how many years? Twenty-five years, twenty years? And in a lot of ways, we've been asleep at the wheel thinking that's gonna be our savior. There's an editorial in the, in the Fox Morning News written by the Dillon mayor that says it'll kill Dillon. And in a lot of ways, it will kill here because what you got to understand is if you have an interstate coming through here, if you don't have exits, they're gone. And I think the last time we looked, there was an exit at Old Wire Road at fifteen-four oh one, um, near the high school sorta, and then maybe one down, uh, the lower part of county. All you're doing is creating a way for people to come through here without stopping. So more on that, you know? The last one we had on that was poor internet cellphone service. We hear it all the time. We don't have to stand for that. There are a lot of rural communities that have same problem. I think that we need to, uh, council should consider making a statement and going to the legislative delegation and the Public Service Commission and say, hey, Verizon, AT&amp;T, whoever, just because we're a poor rural county, you need to put infrastructure in here and make it where this works. And I think you'd be surprised that, you know, we have, we have a person in the county who was chairman of county council, O'Neil Hamilton, who's on the Public Service Commission. And I'm sure he would help us, but we need to speak of. Okay. The last one is more of an internal thing. In order to accomplish a lot of these things, we need to make sure that county government is hitting on all cylinders. We need to make sure we're getting the most for taxpayer dollars. You know, I feel like that's part of the reason, you know, I was hired, I've come out of private sector. Uh, it's about beaten me to death over the last nine or ten months, Ms. Bundy can tell you, but we're making progress. Uh, these are a few things that we're working on internally. We've done a lot of work to have better financial reporting. Ainsley Smore's been involved in that, so we know where we stand, it's not a guess. Um, not that it was in the past, but as the money starts getting tighter, the more you count your pennies. We all do that and the money's getting tighter. We need to restructure county, the county organization to focus on this kind of effort. We've got a lot of folks ready to retire. And when they retire, we need to say, okay, wait a minute now, how do we want to line this out? Let's make sure we line it out the right way. Because when somebody's leaving on their own and they're ready to leave, it's the best time. You don't want to go in and say, well, we gotta fire somebody, we gotta do this. We want to take advantage of those opportunities. Um, we're working to create ways of measuring how we're doing. So we'll get a report, you know, every month from Keith Williams on how many cases he made last month. Or we get a report from Animal Control on how many animals they picked up. Or we get, we, we started on this, we kind of got, got sidetracked, but we're gonna get to where we have that report card, our score card, that I or even you, if you wanted to, could look at and see, well, how are we doing? Well, it's budget time, well, we need another, uh, litter control officer. Well, why? Well, last year we had this many calls, this year we're up to here. Facts, we need facts, not emotions. And then the last two are the software programs I talked about. The first is the fleet maintenance and facility stuff. That'll allow us to track everything we do during the year, um, so we can say, hey, the sheriff's deputy car number eighteen, we spent way too much money because it's worn out. Maybe we'd be better to buy a new one. You know, we want to make those factual decisions. Or, uh, you know, hey, the last time we put a roof on so-and-so building was so-and-so date. Facts. We depend a lot on people that worked here a long time, have it up here and those people are leaving us, we need to get it where we can find it. And then the last thing is, uh, the three-one-one system I talked about, which we're a long way from doing it, fully implementing it, but if it worked out, it could be really good. You dial your cellphone three-one-one, you dial your house phone three-one-one, you tell them what you complained about. You don't call Ms. Bundy anymore. Y'all can, but y'all can't. But I mean, you can see like, hey, there's a couch in the middle of the road on, uh, Carolina Church Road. Well, if you call this in, a dispatcher at nine-one-one is gonna write it down and it's gonna go to you or whoever. You know, they're gonna get it, we're gonna know you got it, we're gonna know who took care of it and we're gonna know where it came from, it's gonna plot it on a map. And we were able to do all this, the software was less than fifteen thousand dollars. So getting it in place has cost a little more and the seventy-five thousand figure is for if we go all the way and we hire another person to sit in nine-one-one. That's a next year thing. And that's what we'd want to share with somebody else. So these are the things that I've pulled from what y'all have done and I hope are things that you agree with. Um, certainly open for changes, but it's a good start. Strategic planning is a, a living thing, you gotta always stay on it. So, you know, as we go along in the next years, touch base on it again. But this will give me something to work with and us something to work with. Okay? Any questions? Now, we, I, I do, uh, would request an executive session because there's some personnel things and legal and contractual things that apply to some of these that would need to be in executive session. So if you were, you know, wanted to adjourn to that, uh, then the boys' council can go home.
Thank you for it, you know, as, as the citizens say, I mean, there's a lot of government, a lot that county council is, is looking to look for a vision and future of the county. I mean, you know, some, a lot of numbers, every looking at population decrease and wondering why we don't have Walgreens and grocery stores and places, I mean, there's, we're trying to figure out the facts and why and what we can do to improve. So with that, we have a motion, can we, can we put in a motion, what is that, the section personally? Go ahead, give me a second, and a second, all of them ready to write in? They'll write anything down.
Mr. Chair, on the border, what's the issue, contractual, legal matter?
Personally, I think contractual.
It's out, it's all three.
All right, thank you very much.
All right, all right, thank you.
I'll teach y'all.